On the website in January, but I'm going to show you all the most exciting things that have happened instead of the usual things that I come with that are boring. So I'm going to start quickly with our mission statement, which is North Idaho College Head Start is a school readiness program that provides education and support for young children and their families. And that is the basis of what we do. Our program's federally funded, and we serve three- to five-year-old, low-income children and their families by enhancing all the cognitive, social, and emotional development pieces of these children's lives. And Head Start provides a learning environment that supports our children in all these areas of growth. But more importantly, our comprehensive services are provided to our children and their families, which include health, and nutrition, and social services, and many other services that are determined to be necessary when we do a needs assessment with our families. So in addition to that, Head Start services are designed to be responsive to each child and their family's ethnic, cultural, and linguistic heritage, which I take great pride in and one thing I absolutely love about our program. North Idaho College Head Start emphasizes the role of parents as our child's first and most important teacher. This is how many meals we serve, so you can thank our cooks for all these amazing meals, because children can't learn if they're hungry. And these are our children that come in the morning and have breakfast and lunch, our children that come in the afternoon and have lunch and snack, and five of our classrooms where our children come, and they're here all day, and they have all three meals. So that also includes anybody who would like to come and have lunch with us. So I'd love to see Trustee Meyer come, now that she'll have a little bit more time and come and have lunch with us. Head Start meals are extremely nutritious, so they're not going to be like your school lunches, sorry, but they're a little bit more nutritious. And they're family-style, so you eat, the children sit and eat. It's part of the whole educational experience, and we're teaching while they're eating as well. So of our children enrolled, 19% of our children were homeless. So that's kind of holding true right now for this year as well. We're at about 17.5%. So that is one of the areas that we really focus on, is trying to find services and resources for our families that are homeless. The percent of our children that are enrolled, that were foster children, is about 5%. And we have many more children that are actually with relatives or with others other than their own family, but as far as formal foster care, 5% of our children fell under that category. And another thing we're really proud of is just how many children we enroll that we're able to either bring into our program with disabilities, including significant disabilities, and serve them in an inclusive environment. And we also find a lot of children through further evaluation that can benefit from some special services so that they can be successful in school. Another great chart will be a little bit more comprehensive in the annual report to show how many underserved children there are, but this shows you how many children and families that we served last year and in which counties. This is amazing. We were able to give 310 children some type of a dental exam and/or fluoride and cleaning. 282 children received an up-to-date medical exam. So that helps us find any barriers to learning, but it also helps families get involved with their healthcare providers on a regular basis. The wheel is our family services, and those numbers show the different services that we provided to our families, when, either when they asked for it, or when it was available to share with them and that they could benefit from. A lot of times, our families do their strength and needs assessment. They tell us what they need help with, and we give them all this information. So one, I think, in particular that's interesting is the adult education numbers. We have families that ask us for information, anything from, "I'd really like to get my GED, and I don't know how to go about that," or "I don't have the funds," up to, "I'm trying to get in to get back and get my master's degree." So we work at, with our families at all levels with that specific topic. So this is the great part. So as our children come in and they are provided a preschool education, they start, just by nature of the fact that they may be a vulnerable population, they start a little lower sometimes than their peers. And so this is where we were able to gain, these are our four-year-olds that were here for the whole school year, so that's what that measure was. So when they came in in the fall, we showed a 19% gain, for example, in social, emotional. If any of you have ever been in a preschool classroom, if you can get them to be socially and emotionally ready, they're ready for kindergarten. And if not, good luck. Math, even though math looks the lowest, we actually had a 37% gain there from fall. And math is an area where our whole nation struggles, so we do see that that significantly is a lower number, and we are working hard, especially with some new curriculum, to see if we can get that 88% up to a higher percentage. That's one of our five-year goals. And then this just explains our family engagement. And so we did a lot of really fun activities with our parents this last year. One in particular at the bottom, our strengthening family celebrations. Our friends at Head Start helped to fund that, and many agencies come together, and we have expanded that to four of our counties. And those strengthening family celebrations have up to 300 people that come, and we do things like make sure they have car seats and smoke detectors and just lots of information about parenting and where you can go if you're stressed out. And a lot of community people come together to make that happen with us. Community volunteers, this is a great picture of the PS, or SPICRM individuals that have a call center now here up in the Silver Lake Mall. They came, and they conditioned books for all of our children, and they all chose their favorite childhood book to take a picture of after they were done. And that's Annette from United Way kneeling down, and they helped her load those up, and they were part of the Jingle Books. So that was wonderful. But this just represents how many people help us toward our non-federal share and in-kind. We, even with increased funding and startup money for our new duration classrooms, we were able to meet our 20% match of our federal grant with 115%. And these are just some of the people that help us do that. Mostly, our parents help us do that. These are our nine Head Start centers, so we have nine centers now. And up at top is Sandpoint, then there's Kellogg and Bonner's Ferry up at the top. Harding is in the middle. And our very newest Head Start Community Early Learning Center, you might be able to see that sign there, and that's at the door. That is the entrance for us at Community United Methodist Church, where we have a beautiful new facility, and next to that is their playground. And then we have our St. Mary's Center, and down in the bottom is our Lakeland. And then there's the Children's Center, where we have 15 slots. And last but not least, that is, who is that? Post Falls. It just looks flawed. They painted a different color now. Okay, so this is exciting and fun. Idaho Head Start Association puts out awards every year, and then those also translate, some of them, to the National Head Start Awards. But this year, we have won. So for Ms. Cassie Worley, who is a North Idaho College student in child development right now, and is also an alumni of our Head Start program, she won the Staff Scholarship, so she'll get $250 from Idaho Head Start Association for her spring semester. And Holly Beliveau Hubbard, who's been with us for many, many years, started out at the Children's Center and is with us at Harding. She got the Idaho Teacher of the Year for Head Start, which is amazing and fun. And here is a special guest that we have here tonight, and this is our Parent of the Year for Idaho Head Start, Tammy Wangler, and her husband, who came tonight. Okay, this thing's gonna work. Let's go back and see if I can make it work. I won't make you say it. It's a little tiny speech, but it does not have its arrow. So we'll move on, and I will not make you give the speech that you gave, but Tammy spoke eloquently at our Idaho Head Start Association meeting on just the importance of Head Start and how well her child is doing in school, that she decided to go back to college because of just some of the encouragement that she got, and just that, you know, what, just the comprehensive services and how they've impacted their families, so I appreciate that.
You'd like to see my speech and the other ones that we did last year at the meeting down in Boise, then you can go onto the Idaho Head Start Association website, and there's a whole bunch of them that you can watch.
Great, thank you.
That would be great if you can do that.
If it counts for anything, I'd like to add my appreciation for the Head Start program with my two small children both through it and seeing the fire that has ignited them in learning in the literal head start that they have on their education. I can't be more pleased with how it's helped my family.
That's awesome. Fantastic, yes, thank you. That was not staged. Thank you, guys. So this is, this is a picture that's up on our wall at Harding, and this little girl is now in first grade. But I wanted to just tell you a little story about Michaela. Michaela has double cochlear implants, and she came to our program when she was really struggling with trying to make them work, and she didn't like them, and would take them out, and we'd lose them, and they were like thousands of dollars, and we'd find them again. And she just had a really hard time connecting to her peers and adults because she really couldn't communicate. We were able to find an interpreter that was not only a great interpreter, but was also an early childhood professional, and she was able to reach her and work with her. And she is now, her mother says, at the top of her class in first grade and is reading at her grade level, which is fabulous, so. And we just thought that would be nice to show you that picture. So thank you for allowing us to come and do this, and thank you for your continued support of the Head Start program.
Thank you, Beth Ann.
Did I make it in 10 minutes?
You're close.
Close.
Any questions or comments? Yep, Brad?
Yeah, Beth Ann, before you walk away, I'm just curious. With 250-some meals, breakfast, lunch, and snack, where are those prepared? Are they onsite, offsite? And yeah, who does that for you?
So we're really fortunate to have our kitchens right in our facilities, so we don't have to outsource food or have food come in. So we do have cooks that are employed by us, and they do the cooking, so that is really nice.
And then I had one other question. I was curious on the social, emotional, down through the math scores and the gains, what assessment tool do you use?
So the assessment tool that we used last year is the creative curriculum. The implementation checklist is what we look at for our classrooms, but the creative curriculum has an assessment tool that we use along with our curriculum. We have made a change to a new curriculum this year, so it'll look a little different. But the Head Start outcomes framework, we make sure that they are in congruence with that and that they meet all of those standards of the Head Start outcomes. And I think this year as well, we'll see some great gains. And that tool shows children from just all across, you know, the peer group, so that you're just comparing in comparison to any child at that age.
Well, I just know that the work across the board that Head Start does really does prepare these kids to enter and be successful without you. It would be a different community, it really would be. We'd be struggling through the K-12 system, so it's a great start for those kids. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other comments, Board? Mr. Howard?
Beth Ann, thanks very much for what you do there. It's really nice to get kind of an overview of what goes on in the Head Start program. I think we hear about it, but we really don't. Get a chance to kind of see the, some of the good work that's being done. One of the questions, or the question I have, it comes up, you give our, you give a report to us each year, and it seems like there's always been a waiting list. Is there still a waiting list?
There is a waiting list. What we're seeing, a little bit shift in some of our communities, that our waiting list is just as high, but there are more, higher income, so they're a little bit over income, so they don't qualify, they're on the waitlist. They don't qualify income-wise, but they're just barely over that income guideline. So we've seen a lot of families that actually have applied in this last year, especially in Cootney County, that are just barely over that income guideline. They really wouldn't be able to afford a quality preschool program, but they're just a bit over that limit. We can take up to 10% of our children with, that are above that income guideline, that is the poverty guideline. But we're seeing just very little in shift in waitlists, and especially in our rural areas, we have the same, about double the amount of children trying to get into the program as we have slots for.
And just to follow up on that a little bit, you mentioned you get help from friends at Head Start, and obviously, the community volunteers working on that federal matching program. Do you get enough additional funding from outside of the federal Head Start program to be able to expand the number of children that you serve?
We do get, so with our TANF funding, which is federal funding that the state has agreed through the J.FAC Committee to give to Head Start to work with families towards self-sufficiency, we're able to serve 293 children instead of 280. So we really rely on that, that TANF funding to be able to serve more children.
Thank you.
You bet.
Any other comments?
Well, Beth Ann, I echo what Judy, or excuse me, Brad and Ken have said about how pleased we are with this program and to be part of it. You know, all of us pay federal taxes, and sometimes we grumble. Usually, we're just cheerful when we pay. But this program, you look at it, and every dollar really matters. You really see your taxes put to the best use and make the biggest difference in lives. And I'm so glad you brought the parents here tonight. We're so pleased to meet you, glad you came. And whatever we can do at North Idaho College to continue to support and cheerlead, and you have this board's commitment, you've had it for years. And so thank you for this wonderful story right before the holidays. I will say, it's a little depressing to hear about the homeless children. I don't exactly know if that means they're staying in shelters, in a car. I hope not. Hope there's not a four-year-old in a car. But if we need to do more, then let's start talking about that.
You bet.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us on to our constituent reports, and Asnec, Caleb Weeks. You're here, you didn't leave for the holidays.
Not yet.
Okay.
So, good evening Chairman Wood, Board of Trustees, Presidents' cabinets, and guests. It's been a pretty successful year in Asnec. We had one senator who had to drop due to life circumstances, so we'll be hiring for that. But other than that, we still have the same board, so it's pretty nice to hear. Our grant for the calculators for the College Skills Center and Peer Tutoring was approved. Thank you to everybody who was involved with that, that was a fun process. A student here, Amelia back there, noticed that some of Idaho's rehabilitation centers were lacking on literature, and she started a project after coming up to me and Asnec. And so she's been collecting books on campus for the last week of school because they buy back books. And that was pretty successful. We got some of the books back, and we have quite a few, quite a few books, not enough funding yet for shipping costs, but we're working that out. So that was really nice to see, so thank you, Amelia, for that as well. I also emailed the board a couple of resolutions, and hopefully, they were received. If not, that's okay, because I am happy to announce that the resolutions have been addressed by a few individuals, and the past student's issue is being resolved right now as we speak. So thank you, Graydon, for that and the work that you've done on that. And other than that, it's only been half a month, I don't have too much to report on, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Board, any questions for Caleb? Well, I have one. Did you, go ahead.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks.
And are you going home, or are you from here?
I am, yes. I'm.
Okay, you're going about 15 minutes away. Well, happy holidays to you and your family.
Perfect, thank you.
Rudolph to find his way home.
All right, that takes us to staff assembly.
Good evening, everyone. So at the last staff assembly meeting, we had Dan English from the Area on Aging give us a presentation, and he told us how they help the senior citizens in the community. And then we had just several good of the orders. The first one was Josh Gitl, and he announced that pay advices are now called earning statements. They have a nice new look, they're printable, and they are found in self-service. Melissa Mawhinney, she provided us an update on meet and confer, and in January, they will be sending out a survey. Suzie Dean reported that she had received an email from Daniel Gold at Boise State, and their ask was if we were interested in exploring an option of having Percy available as a retirement option for full-time faculty and professional staff. So staff assembly agreed that they would be interested in hearing more about that. And then finally, next month, staff assembly is going to move from Myers Health 106 into 102, and we're doing that because we're going to use some software called Zoom so that people who are not able to attend staff assembly will be able to from their desks. So they'll just be able to log into Zoom and participate in staff assembly. That's it.
Great. Board, any questions? Kathy? Anybody? Happy holidays to you.
You too. Merry Christmas.
Faculty Assembly, Jeff Carr.
Thank you, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan assembled guests here. The faculty assembly, as you might have just heard, we received some communication from other Idaho educational institutions that were just wondering about if we were interested in having a dialogue about bringing Percy back. And we, as a faculty assembly, formed a committee, we decided, yes, we look to continue looking into that a bit more. We also heard a report from a committee on job titles. Essentially, there was some concern expressed about naming all our instructors just instructor. So we've had a committee sort of looking at that, seeing if there are a way we can come up with full professor, assistant professor, a way not to tie it to actual salary. They shared their results with us. They still had a couple more snags, but they informed the faculty somebody where they are, and we appreciate that for their updates. Other than that, we're looking forward to a brand-new year, and thank goodness, we finished grading all the finals.
You look a little tired.
Break Christmas time break is coming, and I'm looking forward to it. Any questions or comments?
Board, questions?
A comment, more than anything, this is a little bit off-topic, but I had mentioned to you before the meeting started that I had read the new form of the Sentinel magazine, and I found it very impressive. Quite frankly, I read it from cover to cover. And I might make a suggestion that being an individual that's not on campus all the time, I get snippets here and there, and get to meet people here and there, and I sometimes think I recognize a face. But as I saw the pictures in there, I almost wish there was a subcaption telling me the names of the people who were in the pictures, something about them. So it's a great format, and it was very interesting, and I want you to give my congratulations to the Sentinel staff.
They deserve all the credit, thank you very much, and I'll pass on that bit of a critique.
Great. Have a great Christmas.
You as well, thank you.
All right, that takes us to Senate. Lisa Kellerman.
Chair Wood, trustees, president, guests. We did have a bit of a break, then we got a lot of, got a lot of business. So we did start going through many of the IT policies and procedures that I've talked about in other meetings. We approved a second reading on three of them, so those should come before the rest of you in the spring. So those are policies on data stewardship, security and protection, computer security incident response, and then user authentication. So you should see those in the near future. We approved first readings on two additional policies for media sanitation and disposal, and then cloud computing and data storage services. So you will see those a little bit later. As pertains to this meeting, Senate also, at our last meeting, did approve the facilities, the dual naming facility, facilities for the Coeur d'Alene Tribe, dual names for our buildings. So you will get to see those, and those have already been approved by Senate. Any questions? Or anything that we?
Board, questions? Comments? Have a great Christmas.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. This is moving right along. That takes us to the president's report.
Well, thank you very much. It's been a very active end of the semester for all of us, and that would include me as well. I've done quite a bit of traveling. Start with a couple things. Most of this you've seen in the weekly reports that I send you, well, semi-weekly, but a couple of them I just want to draw out for discussion here. Attended the second of Coeur d'Alene School District Data Summit in November, in the end of November, November 29th. And I'm really glad I had the opportunity to, both that I was invited to attend, and Laura Rumppler attended part of that with me. It's a table breakout-style, kind of table problem-solving discussion format. But that particular session focused a lot on their CTE enrollment, their dual enrollment, and the challenges and questions and school data. And I guess what, a couple things that were, I think, value to us. One, by having NIC in the room to help with the conversation, some of the questions that were asked, frankly, needed to be answered by us. They really wouldn't have known otherwise, so we were able to add value to that part of the conversation, I think. But, you know, probably more important is the ongoing relationship development that we are doing with Coeur d'Alene Public Schools, and soon to be with other school districts as well. Building trust, participating in some of their issues and things that they have. And ultimately, what we'd like to do is create a forum where we can share the problems, the challenges, the opportunities that we have in common, you know, not inconsistent with the subcommittee that I've served on for the Governor's Task Force for Higher Education, the K-20 Pipeline Committee. And that committee was, spent most of its time talking about that point between high school and college, and the challenges of what happens there. So I'm really encouraged by both the inclusion, the relationship building, to the extent that I've been asked to facilitate for the professional staff, which I think is principals and teachers, the upcoming interviews for the superintendent. I'll be facilitating three of the, the three interview sessions for those groups, and that's good. Couple weeks ago, I was invited to go to the Idaho Association of Commerce and Industry, and they wanted to hear about, the question that I was asked to set it up, we answered it a little bit differently, but, you know, the Governor's recommendations on workforce development, that the task force had just come out. And they wanted to know what North Idaho thought about them, what North Idaho College was doing about them. And so what we did was Cassie, Silvis, and Marie Price joined me. If you don't recall, Marie Price was on the task force. We took each of the nine recommendations, I won't go through them here, and we contextualized them, some of them we can't, wouldn't have a role in doing anything about. The first one, for example, was to restructure the Workforce Development Council, take it out of labor, have it report directly to the governor, recompose it. That's not something that we would be, you know, involved in, other than to encourage regional representation, that North Idaho would be represented. But some of them, you know, the context of how things get funded around workforce development, how students get advised, we were able to contextualize. how students get advised, we were able to contextualize both our thoughts on those recommendations and what we're doing relative to those recommendations. So, we spent a lot of time sharing on the funding side. We've participated in every round of the workforce development grants that have come out since 2014, and we've been successful in obtaining those grants. So, you'll recall the report you saw last year on the Idaho Wood Products Grant, first with three companies, and then, second phase with five. And it's just a really good example of competing industries working together to come into common territory to solve their workforce issues. And, so, the whole conversation was showing what's happening in North Idaho, through North Idaho College, in the world of workforce development. And, yeah, at the end of the presentation, somebody down at the end of the table, it turns out it was a vice president from Potlatch, spoke to the group, and he said, you know, we get a lot of presentations and PowerPoint slides, and they're nice PowerPoint slides, but I want to tell you that North Idaho College, including the President, has sat in my conference room, we've had a conversation, we've expressed needs, they've made commitments, and they followed up on those commitments. So, when they show you these slides, and this is to the whole IACU group, about the work they're doing in North Idaho, you're just seeing the tip of the iceberg. And, so, it was a really nice conversation, good value for us to be down there. We had our legislative send-off on Monday. Laura and I have been making our way through our North Idaho delegation, one-on-one. We had our most recent one today with Senator Sean Keough, who, by the way, just earned her associate's degree from North Idaho College.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Just now, right? She just found out about that within the last week or so. And, so, those meetings are going well. Again, we're just developing relationships. I'm relatively new, got to know them a little bit last year, but having more meaningful conversations, I think, this year. We have, I've been making the rounds to the outreach centers, First Silver Valley, in each of the communities, Boundary and Sandpoint, we've met with community leaders, stakeholders, and had good conversations about what North Idaho College is doing in those communities. Most recently, I was at the, the featured speaker at the member luncheon for the Sandpoint Chamber of Commerce, and it was a robust crowd, and we had a great discussion. They asked good questions, and a lot of community folks stuck around afterwards for almost an hour to have ongoing dialogue and conversation. This week, tomorrow, in fact, many of us, I will be leaving for the, for Twin Falls, for the State Board of Education meeting. The Higher Education Presidents Council, that's all eight of us that meet every month, committed at our last meeting to meet before the State Board meetings now, wherever they may be. So, I'll also be having that meeting on Wednesday morning. And then, the Northwest Association of Colleges and Universities is holding a town hall in Twin Falls as well. I'll be attending that before the State Board meeting. But, the Commission is also meeting with the eight Presidents to go over some of the changes. I think you may know, may not know, Sandra Ellerman, the President of the Northwest Commission, retired in December, and they're in transition stage right now, so they have an interim role, and they're, they're just going out on a listening tour to hear from their constituents. After we get through this next holiday season, we start the spring semester. It's coming right up. We'll begin with the spring convocation, and it'll be a relatively short program, but what we're, what we're going to be doing is bringing the college up to speed on where we are with Cultivate, the planning process that we have underway. And, in particular, we're going to be sharing SWOT and SCAN information. So, the environmental scan data that one groups are working on, and then, all the SWOT that all of you, I think almost everybody in this room has participated in, will be presented to the community. And I certainly welcome trustees to join us for that. It's January 2nd, I believe we're starting at 9:00 in the morning. What else? The Governor's State of the State is on January 8th. I think we've organized a viewing here for that. We'll put the word out on that. But, we're also busy with preparations for Legislative Week, JFAC and all that. We will, our JFAC hearing is scheduled for Monday morning on January 22nd. We don't have any word yet on the House Ed or the Senate Education Committees. Won't know that probably until after January 8th, but preparations are underway. We've done a lot of work to get there this year. Don't have, I don't know if you guys had a chance to chat, so I won't go into the trustee part of that, but I think we'll have more to follow on that. And, lastly, and then I'll take any questions, but first, I want to turn it over to Graydon Stanley. He has an announcement.
Thank you very much, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan. With that kind of build-out, without the topic, I could just go so many places here. So, I'll start with Merry Christmas. In addition to that, I'm pleased to inform you that we had on campus today for the first time, Dr. Peg Blake. As you recall, this fall, we tried to hire a dean of enrollment services and weren't able to come up with the candidate we wanted through that process. And so, we'd been working with a search firm who had referred some outstanding candidates to us. Dr. Peg Blake is most recently, she retired in August as the Vice President of Enrollment and Student Services at Humboldt State University. Prior to that, she had stints as financial aid director and dean of enrollment services at Southern Oregon University. She had also been vice chancellor of student services at University in Nebraska-Lincoln, and she had a six-year stint at a community college in Nebraska as well. She has outstanding skills, outstanding experiences, well-known in enrollment services circles across the nation here. She, because of her stint, she'd been vice president at Boise State University as well, and because of that history, after she retired, she moved to Boise. So, when she came to our pool, she was familiar with Idaho, and she was very excited about having an opportunity to come to Coeur d'Alene and do a six-month stint with us. And so, she came today, and she met with members of our enrollment services staff. She'll be meeting with the President's Cabinet tomorrow. She met with management team today. We are just really fortunate to have her on board. She'll be permanently taking her seat on January 8th, will be back with us, and is going to help us continue to address the enrollment issues that we've been talking to you about. So, I'll be anxious to introduce Peg Blake to you after the first of the year.
Good.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I have a question. I guess, I'm confused, and maybe it's because I was, I didn't catch it all. Is she going to be on a six-month stint and then, on a permanent basis?
No, I'm sorry. She is, she is the interim, and in fact, as a retiree, she is adamant about, she's staying for six months. So, she's not interested in the permanent position. But, in fact, we've already begun the process to look for a permanent fill of that position. We're reviewing job description, looking at the process. We'll advertise over the holiday and into the first of the year with the notion that we'll have a permanent replacement to that position by July 1st, when she's done with her interim job.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Board of Presidents? Well, I had a couple. That was a great report, a lot of community outreach, and I was, you and I have talked about this before, recently, the connection with the Coeur d'Alene School District, and that you were invited to the Data Summit, which I think is wonderful. I'm also really pleased that you're going to facilitate the superintendent interviews.
Yeah.
That's clearly kind of a big deal. When, anyone who's served on a board knows that you're looking for someone you can trust to facilitate, and they're looking for their new leader. So, I'm glad the college is part of that. I'm glad it's you. And I'm really excited about where those partnerships and relationships are going to go in the future, because we know that that's the key to K-12, to our pipeline and student success. And you and I have talked about it a little bit, but I'm really thrilled to see some of those things that could come together with curriculum and a whole lot of things. So, anyway, good job. Thank you very much for doing that. And I, while we're talking to the President, I, we kind of left it up to your staff to move forward on replacement for Trustee Meyer and the interviews. I don't know that we have set a date. Does anyone know that? Our clerk, our clerk? Okay, we have not set a date. So, we're going to have to do that. We might as well put it in here under old business, that we need to set a date for interviews. And so, I guess, we now have the names in front of us. Thank you, Shannon, for that. And, thank you to the people that have applied, if they're watching. And, so, we probably should move forward as soon as we can in January and get the interviews done. It shouldn't take long. We should be able to do all of them in a morning or an afternoon, maybe an hour and a half.
Yeah.
So, Board, any ideas, or would you like Shannon to send out a group calendar kind of thing and see where we're at?
Shannon does such a great job of making sure that we all get together.
She does.
I just, I just assume ask her to do that, but as soon after the first of the year as possible. I'd like to make sure that we have some room between the time that we do the interviews and our next meeting, in case we need additional information or something.
Yes. Okay. So, then, we will do that. Shannon, if you wouldn't mind calendaring us, you're so good at that. Thank you. Yes, Trustee Meyer?
From a logistical point of view, once the Board, and I will not be part of that process, should not be, then you, Board, can appoint somebody. Do you have to wait till the Board meeting to appoint? What's the timeline? Because I had said I would, resignation was effective January 31st or whatever it is, but it doesn't need to be if, I wasn't sure what the protocol was on transition, but I'm happy to do whatever works best for the election.
Yeah. All right.
February meeting, so the next meeting wouldn't be till March.
So, it needs to happen in January.
Yeah, we will.
Shannon, as we've talked about this, we're thinking as early in January as possible to get the interview, the first week if possible, it may not be, maybe the second week, with the idea working towards that January Board meeting for an appointment to be made.
So, we, and I have talked to our attorney, Mark, if you want to weigh in on this a little bit, about that transition time. Judy doesn't, we can move forward, but then she needs to be done, right?
What do I need to do here?
Yes, it's actually relatively flexible compared to some of the other selection processes for other entities. Once the Board has made a selection, and you'll need to have a meeting to make the selection, and then, the Board member needs to be sworn in, and that would be Chris Martin's responsibility, and go from there.
And so, Judy can either stay to the next Board meeting or leave earlier.
Whatever works to get the new Board member on board is what I want to help do.
Right. I don't, I don't know that, well, maybe I'm not understanding the question. When, when the interviews are done, and we have a Board meeting, and we select somebody, it can either happen at that time, and you can, and you can be here and confirm your resignation effective then. Right now, you've resigned effective the end of January. And if you want to accelerate that, that probably, you know, seems to me logically that should happen before we swear somebody else in, so.
Okay. Okey-dokey. So, shall I wait to hear from the chairman?
We'll stay tuned on whether we're going to let you go.
Are you looking for another going way?
More importantly, that, as you find someone, then we get them on board, including the trip to Boise, if that fits. I happen to have commitments in Boise, that JFAC date that you just told us about, anyway. So, I'll be there ringing the bell, one way or the other, but I don't want to get in the way of the new person having that happy experience.
Okay. All right. Then, we will stay in touch with you right after our interviews. All right? Does that work? Okay. That takes us on to our new business tab one, first reading of dual naming for NIC facilities.
Thank you, Chair Wood, trustees, President McLennan, colleagues and guests. My pleasure to present this to you for the first reading tonight. All of you, I'm quite certain are familiar with the nine-point agreement that we've had with the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. In fact, we'll celebrate that this spring, the week, the first week in April. We're beginning to make some plans for a celebration of the 20th-year anniversary of that nine-point agreement. You might recall from information that was provided to you, if you're familiar with the document, that point three of that nine-point agreement speaks to the dual naming of buildings here. Original language said that we would name NIC buildings, streets, classrooms, and special places on campus in recognition of important Coeur d'Alene tribal leaders or cultural happenings. We had a revision to that in 2009 that says, "Represent the Coeur d'Alene Tribe by naming buildings, streets, and gathering places with both an English name and a Coeur d'Alene name." Recently, we've been trying to catch up with that process. That hadn't been done since almost 2009, and as you know, there were a number of buildings that had yet to receive their dual name, their Coeur d'Alene name, and new buildings that have come online since. So, we've had the good fortune of working with the Coeur d'Alene Tribe the last few months, sharing with them what buildings have not received that dual name, and then, the new buildings as well, and explaining to them the purpose of the activity that's occurring in that building. According to Policy 6.06, the naming of buildings also goes through a process where it's presented to the President for his approval, then to President's Cabinet, and then, as you heard from Lisa tonight, to Senate for their advisory vote on it. And we've been through all of those processes. The last step then says approval from the Board of Trustees before we can dual name those, those buildings. I want to note, thank you to my good friend, Bill Richards, about some information he provided me with today, so I'd like to make one exception to the document that you received. You might note that, and with apologies to Trustee Meyer as well, you might note that on your spreadsheet, it says Meyer Health Sciences. And you would probably note that the right name for that building, and check me, Bill, is Meyer Health and Sciences Building. So, the translation of that, the Coeur d'Alene tribal translation meant place of health sciences, so it's not as holistic. It doesn't cover everything in that building. And so, I'd like, with your permission, to be able to exempt that one from your reading or be able to bring it to you for the second reading next month with a new translation of that that encompasses both purposes, the health, the health programs that we have there and the sciences programs as well. So, I could bring that back to you in the January meeting. Otherwise, all of these have been agreed upon by all parties involved, and we are certainly excited about honoring our relationship with the Coeur d'Alene Tribe by doing this.
Wonderful. Board questions of Graydon?
Will you be providing pronunciations for all of these rather than just some of them?
Chair Wood, Trustee Murray, we will have somebody here who would be really glad to provide that pronunciation of those. I don't believe that will be me.
Any other questions for Graydon? Well, I would like, oh, go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, I just wanted to thank Graydon. About a year ago, as we were looking at the nine-point agreement, we decided that it was probably a good time to review the whole agreement. And Graydon and others here have been working with Coeur d'Alene Tribe to do just that, and this is just one of the results of that collaboration. So, good work. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, I would like to point out that our good friend, friend of the college, Tony Stewart, is out in the audience tonight. He's, he was here for Judy's going-away party, and he stayed. And the reason I like to point Tony out is because he was very, very involved in the renaming and dedication of the beach. And I remember that ceremony that you put together, Tony, and it was really wonderful with our friends, the tribe. And Tony, in all of his other lives, spends a lot of time honoring the Coeur d'Alene Tribe. And so, this is great. This is coming forward now, and we appreciate everyone's hard work. Thank you, Graydon. All right. That really was our one agenda item. We do have a short meeting. Board Chair report is short as well. I just want to wish everyone happy holidays and safe travels. Take advantage of this break, because we'll come back in January and have lots to do. And so, I would open it up for remarks of the order. Board?
I have something?
Certainly.
I'd like to compliment everybody that was involved. Another successful tri-state this past weekend. I was able to get down there for a while on Saturday, and Ken, you were there, someone saw you, Friday, I think, or maybe it was Saturday. But, anyway, we just, from everything I heard, we did a great job as usual, very successful. Two things that happened that were kind of nice. One is they were able to offload some of the mass of humanity into this student recreation center. So, that was kind of helpful, because it gets a little crowded in there. And the second thing is they were able to have a, what they, I will call it a consolation bracket, I don't know what their formal term was, but normally, in a big tournament like that, two losses and you're done. Well, for the kids that lost their first two matches, they were able to do kind of a little second mini consolation. So, every kid got two more matches. So, everybody that traveled and braved the snowstorm, every, every young person wrestling got at least four matches, which if you understand, you know, the concept of sports, the more you get, the better. And so, it was a great experience, and they got more mat time. So, by having the other facility, and the way Pat and Carrie and the guys were able to utilize that, every young person got at least four matches. So, I think they felt that was more worthwhile, and so, that was a good thing. One thing I did notice, though, this would be my small critique, I'm not sure who to direct this to, but we had a lot of people come into our school. And I was up on the stage, and I was here, and I was visiting with the Coeur d'Alene coach, Jeff, and the Lakeland coach, and the Post Falls coach, Pete, and up with Carrie and the
Kerry and the guys, and making my rounds, and visiting with lots of folks. And the comment that came back a couple times was, there wasn't a table out front with literature and information on the college. You know, we just, we put thousands of people, or hundreds, or I don't know how many, I don't want to exaggerate thousands, but there were a lot of people there. Maybe we broke a thousand over the two days. But we really didn't have a presence there to take advantage of all those people coming by into our facilities. And so a couple people just commented on that, and then, you know, thought what a great opportunity that would have been to, to advertise and introduce our school to all the people from, you know, they call it tri-state, which is funny, because, you know, wrestlers can't count, right? But, you know, it's Washington, Oregon, Idaho, and Montana, with a few others scattered that come sometimes. They've had kids from California, Nevada, wherever, but primarily those four states. But those are still all viable states for us to be reaching out to. So, so that was one thing. I'd love to see in the future that we can have a little more of a presence there somehow. See, who knows? I mean, we have a pretty decent wrestling program. Some people think well of it, you know, and there are guys there wrestling, you know. Let's get everybody thinking about our school beyond just that.
Completely agree. Good. All right.
Anyway, it was a great event.
Good. Trustee Meyer?
Post Falls won, too, by the way. So local, local high school won the whole thing. Three out of four years for them now.
That's really great. Trustee Meyer?
Another remark for goods of the order, my last chance to comment on, as a board member, about Idaho Business for Education, but that's another group, and I didn't know if our president had any more comments to add to the issue that I know the IWE is championing, and that is taking a look at our system within the state of Idaho for higher ed, because currently we have three open positions in our universities within the state. That's, ISU is looking for a new president, BSU is looking for a new president, LCSE will be having, looking for a new president. And so there's been some discussion, I think both at the task force for higher ed, as well as within either Business for Education, saying, is this a time when we need to look at some of what they call the back office operations that go on in these universities to coordinate them more effectively, both for information, understanding, and knowledge, as well as cost effectiveness? And so there's been some visiting with the governor about how the state board, how the various presidents, how the system can be more integrated and more cost-effective. And my understanding is during the state of the, state address that you'll have here available on campus, the governor will be suggesting some new things. For me, as, as a champion of community colleges, I think it's especially exciting, because we, Community College was the fourth one, I think, have the best system going amongst the four community colleges, and I think it'll be a chance for us to continue to be effective at saying, we do a lot of good things for economic development and training for folks who then may go on to the four-year schools. But I just think it's an interesting time of potential change within the state, and now we need to be wise in how we can figure that all out.
Great, great. Any other comments for the good of the order? Ken?
I'd kind of like to follow up a minute, excuse me, on Todd's comments. I was at the tri-state, and I talked to Pat Wickham, and he had indicated to me that last year there were like somewhere around 450 contestants. This year, there were over 600.
Yep.
And so it gives you some sense about the popularity of this particular program. And I got to tell you, as I sat there as a spectator, first of all, I couldn't get a seat where I could get a good view because of those pillars there. Secondly, I had wrestlers and young people climbing over me all the time, trying to get to some of the interior seats, because the seating is terrible. And the, the number of people who attended with these young wrestlers, their parents came and their family members, and, and it was really crowded, and I heard a lot of comments about it being so crowded. And we will ultimately lose probably the kind of attraction that's been built up for that event if we don't start seriously thinking about a new gymnasium.
Great.
And that's a great example of, of what it would do for this, this community. You know, at graduation time, we can't put all the people in the gymnasium for graduation. So there are a lot of events that we could probably use a new gymnasium for, but that's a great example of how it would benefit this community.
If I made it that point, Ken, you're absolutely correct. And again, part of that was having the second facility, which offered the additional matches, which also with the popularity added to the numbers, and it was quite an increase. As a parent who sat through that, as his son wrestled, some of you know my son wrestled in college and placed at tri-state, so been there, done that, on the co, on the floor as a coach and as a parent, I do second and echo Ken's thoughts that a new facility and for our wrestling program would be helpful for them, too. Yeah. I think you and I have even visited a little bit about this. So something to definitely consider and look at, the possibilities.
Individually, I think each board member's kind of talked to one or the other and said, boy, we really need a new gym. And so I guess while we're here with our president, he's been working on facilities planning with his staff, and maybe we could just ask him to explore, move forward, see what he thinks, come back to us with some ideas. Is now the time?
I think now would be a good time to maybe talk a little bit about process. I don't know, Chris, if you're ready to jump into that. But this, we're, we're well on the road now into the facility master, and there's a whole level of board involvement in that. And it probably wouldn't surprise you to hear that I've heard similar things, and, and all of that goes into the mix. So there are some, there are some obvious ones, I think, that they just need to run through the process of the facility master planning process. But Chris, do you want to add anything to that? Put you on the spot here.
Sure.
That's what they pay you the big money for.
President McLennan, members of the board, we are in the middle of the facility master plan, and this is something that we've heard through the needs analysis loud and clear. And so at the beginning in January, we're beginning focus groups as well with different constituents across campus to hear what their departmental needs may be that we're not aware of, that maybe are not as obvious as, as the gymnasium issue, to put all of that into a comprehensive facility plan. Trustee Meyer, if I can say it one more time, programming should drive all of these decisions.
Say it again, say it again.
And if that's, that's one thing that I've, that I've heard from, from you, and we're, we're dedicated to doing that, and that process is well in play with a report being finalized in the spring semester with board involvement, but to present to the board to say, here's, here's the needs, and then here's a, here's a way forward for facility master planning on our campus.
So my question then is, we wouldn't want to miss any opportunities for projects or anybody that we could ask for funds to help us. And so I respect that process. I think it's very, very important, but, and programs do drive our facilities, but you've just heard about some programs that we're really in dire need of a new gymnasium. So I don't, with that in mind, would we like to ask the president to, to maybe think about that a little more and come back to us?
Sure.
Maybe, maybe explore a little more before the master planning is complete?
Oh, you mean that's, project of that specific scope?
Yes. I don't know. Board?
Why don't we wait and see what they come up with?
Yeah, I think.
They may prioritize it exactly.
When you say spring, how far out in the, spring in Idaho could be May.
June, really.
Yeah.
So just.
Life is a season.
And at the beginning of this planning process, we, we presented the board with a timeline that, that the, the one thing that I think, one of the things that drove a lot of the timeline was the backwards walking of a facility master plan, because that was work, you know, we, we just have not done that work at the level that Chris and his team are doing right now. And I mean, it is really, it's, it's best-case work that they're doing right now. And I mean, we could go into some detail of that. I would, I would, don't think that this process is going to get too far away from anything that we would do more immediately. We'll be able to accommodate an opportunity, as any good plan should, we'll, we'll be able to, you know, to work with that. I, I do expect something in an athletic-related facility to be a part of the plan, just a matter of where that gets prioritized. And the great thing about resources that come in, they tend to redefine your funding priorities if the funds are available to do those things.
Very true.
The better work to do is to appropriately plan for the need of the program, in this case athletics or gymnasium use, and make sure that we've done the good groundwork so that if dollars should come to help fund something like that, we're ready to go. And we're well on our way to, to do that work. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. All right. Any other good of the order? Judy, this could be your last meeting.